Hey there everyone, so welcome back to another Go video. It's been a while since we've done a study session video, so I want you guys to come join me on this study session route and I have an exciting match for you guys today because this match is not a current match. Within the last decade, this is an extremely old match. You guys can see just by the name of the players, we have Yasuda Shusaku versus Kaito Ryuwa. Ryuwa, Ryuwa. And this is none other than Honenbo Shusaku's game from this nice big red book and this is, I purchased this about a year ago, this book. And I've just started cracking it open, just to kinda take a look at the different games that Shusaku was playing. Before he became Honenbo, before he earned the title of Honenbo. And so if you guys have this book at home, again, this is the games of Honenbo Shusaku. From, um, I got on Amazon, it was about forty dollars for the whole book. Uh, and it's really hard to find a lot of his games. Uh, on the Go4Go or SGFgo or any of the Kifu websites. So having a nice solid book and just being able to play it out is pretty nice. Now unfortunately, the downside of printed SGFs is that you have to find the numbers yourself, which is very tedious and time consuming. But none other, this is game number 111, so if you guys have this book, it's game number 111. And this was played on December 7th, 1844. Yes, 1844, this game is old, this game is almost 150 years old, 200 years old, I don't know, it's been awhile, it's since 1844. And since we are in the month of December currently, at least at the time of this recording. We are going to peer into history for the time. Going back to December 7th, 1844. So you guys have a board position right here, I want you guys to take a look at it. And pause the video and tell me in the comments below, or just do this, you don't even have to do it in the comments below. Do this on your own and figure out what should Black's next move be? So White just played over here. Okay, on the Q17, what should Black's next move be? And try to figure out what is it that Shusaku is going to do? Now, I just recently looked up online as well as talked to a couple of my club members, how do we study professional games? And pretty much there are three ways to study a professional game. And it goes by easy, medium, and hard. And so I'm just gonna throw it out there, I had no idea what I was doing in my first couple Saturday study session videos was the hard way, which is pretty much identifying what should the next move be? That was listed, I forgot which website it was, but if you guys type in, "How should I study Go professional games and go?", it lists out the easy, medium, hard. We're doing it the hard way. And you get, in my opinion, you do get the most out of it. But it does require you to spend the most mental energy to perform it. Now, if you're not looking to kinda study it seriously and just really, if you're a memorizer, that's the intermediate way, go through a game, memorize the game, recognize patterns. That was what they label as being a medium type of study. And an easy type of study is just to go through the game, just have fun with it. Uh, just skim through the game, just enjoy the game. And hopefully through the process of just enjoying the game, you'll remember a thing or two. But what we are doing is we are doing the extremely hard route and we are spending an exuberant amount of mental energy just to study a professional game. Now, why do I do it? Number one, I find it, it's the best way to really understand something. It just builds into my teaching philosophy, I teach a lot of students. And the best way that I've ever learned anything was through teaching. And so the hard way of doing things is by trying to teach to others or kinda ask yourself where would Black play next? Or White play next, etcetera? That just built into my own philosophy in, in, in learning and how I best learn. Everyone's gonna learn different, up to you, you guys can pick uh, the style that you wanna learn. But for us, in terms of this video, this is what we're gonna do. And so I'm hoping that gave you guys enough time while I was just jibber jabbering uh, to kinda look at the board position and see uh, what the story is unfolding. And I kinda got this idea again through, um, some watching Hikaru Nogo where you know, you have the professional teacher sitting down, there's a board position and all the students are around. And so I'm kinda trying to imitate that where I'm not a professional, but we are studying a professional game. And we're gonna sit down around this board and try to decipher where Black should play next. Alright, so without further ado, let's get started. I'm hoping that was ample enough time, let me plug in my little pen doodle daddle thing. And I'm hoping that it is recorded onto the correct screen here. Let me see, oh, it's on the wrong screen, okay. Well, okay, I'm not gonna use my pen. Because I don't wanna move things around and I don't wanna have to redo OBS. So let's, let's just peer through the board position right now. White just played, this is move number 54, White just played an Atari. Okay, well, first things first, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, you know, there's two choices that we have, we either save our black stone and run out. He's already an Atari, so the latter, we could do a lot of damage with this ladder, just run out and just get a lot of black stones in here. That's my first inclination is, is just to do that. Um, if we go up and he goes down, well, we'll just honey, we'll, we'll just go down with him and he's already an Atari. So for me, I'm looking at the ladder and on either side, I'm connecting on the right side. So if he ladders me up and pushes through, we have our corner. We can ladder, we're, we're in no danger. If he hanes us from the left and builds the ladder out, well, we get a couple moves here and there. It reduces his side. And creates more cutting points in general, yeah, it over concentrates him in this area, but I don't think that's a bad thing. Okay, so for me, the ladder works, he's ready on Atari. I don't really care about that. I don't know, that's just me, now. With that being said, let's just take a look at the positions of the board. Now that's just the local situation, let's look at the global aspect of the board. So Shusaku is playing as Black and as you guys know, Shusaku, anytime he plays Black, there's a high likelihood that he is winning. A very high likelihood, I believe GoPro Yunwu, GoPro Yunwu said it in one of her videos that, you know, Shusaku just has to say, "I played as Black" and people already know that he won the game. I personally don't think uh, playing as Black will always give you that victory and it might not. But this is before he became Honenbo. So there might be a chance that this is a game that he struggled against. Now, let's take a look, he has the corner, he has this big corner right here, this big nice corner area. Okay, he also has a little bit of the bottom, now it can be reduced if White just plays at the P2 position, it can be reduced. Okay? So Black's position is right here, 1, 2, 3, and a little bit up here, just a little bit, 4. That's a big, he got 3 corners, Black has 3 corners. How about White, and White, I'm gonna do it as Red. Let's look at White's territory, White has a little bit over here. A little bit over here, again, this stone is fairly loose, a little bit right here. But we take a look at White, White is building a huge potential in the center right here. This is massive. We don't know what White is trying to do. But it looks to be that Black right now currently is in the lead. And I'm gonna cheat a little bit, because we are on an online program that can estimate the score for us, let's just take a look at the score. We eyeball, I'm thinking Black is ahead, just by eyeballing. Now this potential, if it's considered, then White will be ahead. But let's take a look, estimate score, White is ahead by 1 point. So it's a fairly even game right now. Fairly even, White's ahead by 1 point. Black has 3 corners and you can see that White is trying to build this big moil. Okay, that is White's goal in this game, it looks like that's White's goal. Drinking some coffee now, so. The question now comes, what is a big move? Is this stone, this P17 stone worth taking? Well, I don't know. If White takes the stone, right? What happens? Well, Black can always play here. Okay, let me see, Black can always play here. Alright, Black plays here, uh, White extends down. Splitting the 2 black groups, Black takes, White pushes, right? Builds a nice wall and now White has this whole side, that's one variation. Or we could, Black plays there and White captures. Black goes down, White fixes. Black extends, I don't like that move. For White to, to fix right here, I feel like it's very small if we do this. If we Atari, right? Atari, Atari, it doesn't work. We still are in trouble here and this is a worse position in general. So I don't like this variation right here. Okay? Uh, but Black is protecting his corner, what if White pushes forward? Well, then Black just Ataris, White Hanes, Black extends. It's the same as before. So, uh, White saving this stone, uh, Q17 doesn't make sense if Black plays here. It makes more sense for White to disconnect. Maybe Black wants to be aggressive and White collects and Black jumps, something like this, this looks to be a little bit more, um, how do I put it? Detrimental? Okay? Alright, what else can Black do in this case? Well, what if Black Tanukis? And say that, look, I see White's big area, there's a big gap right here and we cut, right? What happens then? Well, White Ataris. Black decides to connect on top, maybe try to attack this white stone? And then and then what? Right, White just takes the whole corner? Is this a big enough trade and Black pulls back? Is this a big enough trade? White grabbed a whole entire corner. And Black grabbed this, but now the question is, is Black's group alive right here? No, it's not. This is actually a huge thing that Black, if Black was to Tanuki out, Black's whole group right here is in trouble, if we estimate the score, this is dead probably, not yet. Uh, White is ahead by 5 points at this point. And it looks to be like Black's life is in question right here. Right, Black would have to play a couple more moves. Kinda trying to solidify the eye space here. Okay? Something like this. Right? Yeah, this is bad. Okay, this looks really bad for Black in general. White connects, Black goes down, White connects. And then Black is living in ko, something like this. Alright, Black's out, White's here. And then White would be forced to take. And then Black is out. Kind of, right? So this looks bad for Black, I mean, Black is now pushed to struggle to live. White's out. Uh, White can easily take away, you know, the second eye, like, move like this, right? Black has to go out, White has to go here. Oops, no, that's not it. And then White's out, right, so Black is struggling. Okay? Yeah, Black is just, just not having a good day. Okay? So I don't think having, uh, Black taking this corner is a good thing. Now what else? Uh, maybe Black wants to invade in here, split the big moil up, right? White can Tanuki, White doesn't have to take this, but say that White does, right? Black defends. Okay, White comes out, Black pulls out and then White just caps. Alright, that, that seems a little too big for, for, uh, Black or for White. I'm thinking White is really happy with this trade right here. Okay? I don't know what White would do in this case, honestly. Okay, something like that, I have no idea. But it looks to be losing this whole corner right here, getting pressed, then we have another move right here that we would have to pay attention to. Here's another move and you know, it just, look at Black's position, it's really tiny now, there's 2, 4, 6, 8, 10 points over here. And you know, I, yeah, I don't, I'm not too sure. Okay? So there's a lot of big moves. A lot, a lot of big moves. And we could go on and on and on about what would be a good move or a bad move. I mean, you know, Go lectures, at least, you know, if you watch Nick Sibicki, Nick Sibicki? Nick, if you watch Nick's video, he goes over like 1 or 2 moves and it's 20, 30 minute discussion with, with a whole group of students. Now unfortunately, I don't have a whole group of students with me, so I only have me. And, um, you know, I'm seeing that Black playing here. Okay, so Black playing somewhere here is a big move. Right here is also a big move. Running this stone out might be a big move. Okay? Uh, what else? I think that's it, those are the biggest move I see. Uh, these moves are here on the side and let me use a different uh, I can't, huh? Let me use a different, come on, stop. Erase? Can I erase? Nope. How do I erase? Do I just click it, uh, I click it again? Uh, if we take a look at these moves in square right here, I don't think these moves are that big, to be honest. They're fairly small, you get a point or 2 and you kinda strengthen uh, Black's position by like, I guess at a point or 2. Um, these moves here are very small in my opinion. It's only a point or 2 and it's like an endgame move cut, kinda thing. So I don't see that being super big, maybe even here, you're gaining what, 2 or 3 points? So yeah, here's another small move. Okay, so all the ones in square are small moves, all the one in triangles, I see them as a bigger move. It might not be, but I'm gonna go with it. Okay? Interesting. Okay, so what is Black's next move? Well, I'm gonna tell you. Not there. Okay, Black's next move is take. He takes, Shusaku decides to take this stone. Allowing White to come on in. And then rather than saving the corner, rather than saving the corner right here, allowing White to play the ko and then extending out. What does Black do? Black didn't do this, Black didn't do any of these variations here. Okay, right? Well, White probably wouldn't play there, White would probably play here, Black uh, plays here. White, White play here, Black will play here, right? And then something happens, rather than playing this variation, which I think is better for Black anyways, because yeah, he's crawling on the bottom, but he's reducing White. He decides to fill. Which baffled me, this move right here baffled me so much. I have no idea why he decided to fill the ko. Again, does it hurt? That White takes? I don't think so, I think just solidifying your corner and extending out, what's White going to do? White can't really do much, right? White can't do much here. I mean, he's an Atari next move anyways, yeah, he got a couple forcing moves, right? But this seems to be a way better deal for Black, I feel. Than for White. But Shusaku decides to fill. Okay, and then White decides to go for the invasion right here on H17. And so Black has a highly concentrated diamond flower right here in the top. And White's very loose everywhere, look at how loose White is everywhere else. And look how concentrated all the black stones are next to each other. And so this is a game where I'm looking at it, the first 50 moves, it kinda makes sense, it kinda doesn't. Again, I'm no pro, I'm not Shusaku. But in, when I'm looking at this game, it's just so condensed everywhere. And I'm thinking to myself, if we are playing for like a turtling type of strategy, maybe it will work, but on a, on a Go board where you're starting at 19 by 19 and it's fairly even, fairly easy, uh, fairly fair, open to both players and you're playing as Black. You don't typically want to be hyper defensive as Black. And it just looks to be like Shusaku is very defensive. So let's take a look at the beginning of the game, just to see up to move 58, this is move 58. What happened? So if we take a look at the beginning of the game, we can see that the first 2 moves was such an interesting. It's a blank board, first 2 moves, Black takes a 3, 4, White approaches immediately. Black decides to Tanuki, White decides to press to gain outside influence, so just this alone, right? Having this line right here alone tells me that White is seeking to gain influential territory, influence, uh, strategy. Okay, it's, it's one, he wants influence in this game. And then Black, again, this seems like such a slow move. With AI, AI says jump, attach, whatever, but having a having a position where it's a 2 stone connection, it seems very, very slow. Maybe the reason why Shusaku played here was because he was afraid of, if he played the jump, right? We hone and then we slide in. Maybe he was afraid of that, maybe he was afraid of having these vulnerabilities here. Okay? I mean, this kinda looks good for Black in, in all honesty. But maybe he was afraid of the 1 space, uh, jump, maybe there's a lot of vulnerabilities that he don't want, especially with 2 stones in this corner. He decides to, to do a 1 space extension, which I thought was super, super weird. And then White decides to pluck, because again, if Black jumps, if White pushes and Black jumps, White is disconnected. So what White is doing makes sense. White is protecting the connection, right, is keeping the groups connected. Black is jumping because Black doesn't wanna be boxed in, which makes total sense, and then White Tanukis grabbing them, their own corner. So we have 1 corner to 1 corner to fight in 1 corner. And take a look at Shusaku's move at 5, 3 here at the P3 position. This is a very loose position on the right hand side, so White can easily come in to invade later. Another 5, 3, and then White comes in to invade. So we have a lot of fighting. And you can see within the first 14 moves, you can see White's strategy already unfolding. White wants to contain Black into the corners and take center control. Black sees that, Black is gonna try to extend out and then White's gonna build a base out into the middle of the board. Uh, side of the board to, facing the middle. Black decides to take a whole corner for himself, rightfully so, that's a good move, okay? And then we see White kinda pushing Black around, there's a cut coming up, Black fixes, White is protecting his group now, jumping out to kinda escape into the middle. Black is approaching, White is grabbing aside, Black is sliding in, White's protecting the corner. Black is now trying to take the whole top, White doesn't want Black to take the whole top. Invades, Black kicks, White stands, Black jumps, White jumps farther. Okay, so you can see that White is jumping much faster and farther. Again, Black can play here, White can play and then Black and then White. Black, White, Black, White, Black, White, Black. So that doesn't work, the latter does not work for Black. Okay, so having the large knight's move is nice. In this case, I just wanted to take a look to see if it, if it worked. Okay? Black decides to jump, putting pressure on these 2 stones. White decides to come in to try to split the 2 black groups, the top group and the side group here apart. Black connects, White decides to reduce Black some more and keeping White's shape nice, because there is a large knights here, so this is here to help fix the gap. Black peeps, White connects, now really solidifying the connection between the 2 groups. And then White decides to, or Black comes in to kinda split them up, White decides to peep at the vital right here. Okay? Connects, there's solid connection here, Black is now making the triangle, the dog's face. To surround these 2 white stones and isolate these 2 white stones. And White's like, fine, take it. And then this is where we end up in move 52, 54. 55, 56, 57, oop, wrong one, 57's right here, 58 is to split Black's group now, we're splitting this group from this group. Okay? Black does not want to be split, he's going to cap. So again, all of these moves make sense in the local fight. It's just that the 2 space right here, as well the highly concentrated area over here. And this flower pattern was just a very weird shape for me. And I had no idea um, if this was gonna be a good game for Shusaku. Anyways, White comes into Hane to kinda undercut and connect the 1 stone back to his group. Black doesn't want to and White decides to cut. Atari, Black decides, yep. And White was like, okay, well, I'm just gonna play elsewhere. Spend another move, take my 2 stones. Because now's the time to do it, if you don't do it, I'm going to capture next move and I'm gonna connect my groups back. But again, for Black to spend another move to capture 2 points, 4 points in total, plus or minus the territory that he's able to reduce. White can easily play 1 move right here. White plays a C12, what's Black going to do? That's another 6, 7 points versus the 2 points White has here. So very tiny move to take. White pushes up, White pushes up again, Black and then White making cutting points, double Hane. Black is now really trying to get access to the center, so we can see Black building his wall here, trying to get access to the center. All because White's big moil right here is really solid. I mean, White has a huge wall. Uh, White's like, you know what, I'm gonna start peeping your corner. This group right here is not alive. Black's like, yes it is, I'm gonna connect, White's like, no you're not. And Black's like, yes I am, now all of this is mine. Okay, yes, some bad shape, but it's all mine. And White's like, I'm gonna make you, I'm gonna force you to over concentrate in this area. I have a lot of agi and we're gonna go with it. And then boom. So these stones here are connected, they're facing out. These black stones over here are connected. They are now surrounded, they're not out. They can't get out. So Black is gonna start peeping at the cuts here. And now Black knows that he's getting surrounded, so either A, surround White with another surround or try to cut through. Right? Cut this group from this group by playing that center black move. Okay? White's like, okay, split it, I'm alive on top. White's like, okay, split it. I'm alive on top, I'm alive on bottom. There's a lot of eye space in this area. I'm okay with that. Blacks like, I'm sure you are. And white's like, I know I am. Because I have eye space here now, I'm connecting under. And blacks like, hmm, I don't think so. And white's like, hmm, yes. Cut this one stone off. This one stone doesn't mean anything. It's dead. Right? It's one stone. I value life. One eye here, one eye here, the whole group is alive. Blacks like, okay, well, you're gonna try to live. I'm gonna build a nice little wall right here. Split your two groups up into quarters. White's like, I'm gonna Hane. Blacks like, I'm gonna get from under you. And white's like, no. I'm gonna block you. The monkey jump, not a threat, not a threat. I'll let you crawl on the first line. You let me build my nice wall all the way back up. And then I have all of these points here. All of these points are worth more than two corners guaranteed. So you take your poison. And blacks like, okay, I need to get out. I need, I need some way to reduce your area because you already have one eye here. This eye needs to be destroyed for me to kill the whole entire group. Man, and so, right now you guys can see the story unfolding. There's, there's a lot of back and forth. And I'm, I. It's amazing to me. And this is the one thing I love about the game of Go. I, I love a lot of things about the game of Go, but. The amazing thing about the game of Go is this was played about a hundred and fifty years ago. I don't, I don't know when eighteen forty-four is. Actually, you know what? Let me see. Twenty twenty-four minus eighteen forty-four.
Two thousand twenty-four minus one thousand eight hundred forty-four is one hundred eighty.
It's a hundred and eighty years ago, guys. Almost two hundred years ago. One hundred eighty years ago, this game was played a hundred eighty years ago. And a lot of the moves. Makes sense. They make a lot of sense on why black and white would play this way. And if you compare it to, uh, Karago or AI. I would say I understand these older games better than I understand the newer games with AI, uh, josekis and all that. I don't know why. It just, what story, if you're trying to kind of make a story out of, out of old SGFs versus the modern SGFs. I have a better time of building a story out of the older SGFs. Older games. And I think it has a lot to do with how the human brain works. It's we, we have a way of logically building decisions through this game. And with the AI coming in, AI likes to play a lot of agi moves, lots of sporadic moves that we might not understand fully until like a hundred moves down the road. And so. And another fascinating thing about the game is that this is a hundred eighty year old game and we are replaying this. In a modern sense, when they were playing this live a hundred and eighty years ago and we're playing the exact same moves. So I just find that super fascinating. Anyways. This is already a thirty minute video, guys, so I don't mean to drag this video on, but it is very fascinating to see. And so white comes in. And blocks black. And, and white's like, you do whatever. This is a one point move and you are fixing my cuts, right? Bl- by black playing there. Now black cannot wedge. Right? Because what happens? Oops. White blocks. There's a tiger's mouth, right? Before. If black decides to wedge, okay? Say that white Tanukis. If black wedges and white goes in and black comes out, right? There's still this disconnecting point right here where white has to fill. If not, then black cuts. Right? And then white's in trouble. So having another white move here. Okay, prevents black from kind of splitting. Okay, and again. If black does this and white connects the other way, there's a lot of cutting points right here. Right? There's still cutting points. See? So white stops monkey jump and fixes his shape right here with that move. I thought that was an amazing move. Uh, no, black did not do that. Black decides to come in here and then now. White's like, you're already an Atari, my good sir. What are you gonna do? You're gonna ladder me? You're already an Atari. You have to come back and fix and then I'm out. Right? If you try to net, I come in, right? Atari, take, I'm out. So. Blacks like, no, I'm gonna block you from underneath. White's like, okay, you do that. And I'm out. And blacks like, sure you're out, but I'm gonna connect underneath. And is that a big deal? No. White doesn't mind black connecting underneath. Why is that? Because black only gains like four points. White has outside territory. And white can easily just press black into this little tiny center. And white gets to take the whole left side as well as the right center. That's my opinion. White decides to do a double Atari, black decides to save the two stones, white takes, and now we have a panuki shape. And now this whole. Left side right here seems really big for white. Black sees that and white's like, yeah. If you try to invade, mister. I'm just gonna come in and I'm gonna split. Or I'm gonna split, right? I'm gonna split you. Right? You gotta fix one of the sides. Boom. Split. Okay? Alright. Black decides to come in, white's like, don't care. Gonna fix, gonna fix. And reduce. And reduce. And now we are essentially now in endgame. Okay? Monkey jump is now going to get saved and it's blacks like, whites like, go ahead, save it. I want you to save it. If you try to extend out, it's not gonna do much. Black saves, white pushes and then white fix. Black blocks the white, uh, bamboo joint. Whites like, I don't care. And this is just endgame here. Hane, black fixes, white solidifies and black passes, white passes. This was a short game. This was a hundred and forty moves total with the two passes on the bottom. And so. If we take a look at the board right now. Honenbo Shusaku, actually, he wasn't known as Honenbo yet, he's Yasuda Shusaku. Versus Kaido, I'm just gonna say Kaido, Shusaku versus Kaido. We can see this variation. And we can see that blacks territory is this. This little bit. Right? Um. There is no territory in this center right here. This center has no territory. This is territory right here and this right here is territory. Why do I say the center is no territory? Because white can always come in and invade. And we don't know the outcome of this invasion just yet. White can panuki right here, right? To kind of force black into doing things. At most, black got like four points in the center. Okay? So. And black has this over here. Okay, so that's blacks territory. Now let's look at whites territory. Okay, and I'm gonna go red. Whites territory, this bit right here, this huge bit right here. Okay, with this. Okay, we have this bit right here and then we have this bit right here. This center right here looks massive. It looks to be as big as almost three quarters. Just this whole center right here is almost as big as three quarters. So. What is the final score? Final score. Of Yasuda Shusaku versus. Kaido is. White wins. By eleven points. Technically nine points in the record, but white is winning by eleven points. So this was one of the games that Honenbo Shusaku. Who's not yet Honenbo yet, playing as black. Lost as black. Hopefully you guys enjoyed that. I, I really enjoyed looking at this game. This is game number one eleven again, for those who bought the games of Honenbo Shusaku. The, the book is forty dollars on Amazon. Um, but this was a fantastic game. Black was, like I said, overly concentrated and just being able to make a story out of these old SGFs was really fun. Hopefully that was good and until next time everyone, I'll see you guys in the next episode. Take care, everybody.